Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody this afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the August 6, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Davie County Board of Education. If you would, please join me in the invocation. As we gather this afternoon, I express thanks for this day and all of its blessings. I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance. Further, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern in the freedoms we enjoy. We pause to remember the students, faculty members, and families in our system and community who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are with them. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and citizens of Davie County. Amen. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think we have Boy Scout Troop 575 from First Baptist Church with us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Board Wyand. We appreciate you coming today. At this time, I will move to the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
Ms. Owens makes a motion to adopt, and we have a second by Ms. Livengood. At this time, we'll vote all in favor, 6-0, to adopt the agenda. I'm gonna make one quick statement. Mr. Junker's not with us tonight or this afternoon. He's out of town, so he had something else going on, couldn't be here, but sends his regrets. At this time, we'll move to approve the minutes from the July the 9th Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Drexler. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? 6-0. At this time, I'm gonna recognize some dates here for our board report. Today, we had the first day of Early College, and on October the 17th, at 12 noon, we have the Back to School Empowerment Event at Clement Grove. I think we're gonna hear a little bit more about that later this afternoon. The 21st, we have the, at 8:30 at Davie High, we have the Back to School Commencation. And then on August 26th, Monday, August 26th, we have the first day of school for everyone other than Early College. And I think at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Hartness for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to see everyone this afternoon. Good crowd here today. Also want to recognize our attorney, Jill Wilson. Jill, would you mind recognizing your guest with you today?
I would be honored. With me today is my summer associate. For those of you who don't know how law firms work, we hire prospective lawyers in the summer who are in law school. And with me is Elizabeth Traubman. Elizabeth did her undergraduate work at Princeton and is in the joint MBA, I do it every time, Masters of Public Policy and J.D. Program at Duke and Carolina. So we're honored and delighted to have her here with us in Davie County, and I know she's gonna learn a lot from all of you.
Welcome, Elizabeth. You made Duke fans and the Carolina fans happy there.
That's not easy to do there every day.
I can't lose.
Welcome. Today was the first day of school for our Early College, so school is back in session. I went by the school there today, and those students were already back in the swing of things, and teachers were ready and prepared, and Ms. Lynch is doing a great job serving our students at the Early College. The rest of our staff is diligently preparing for students that will return three weeks from yesterday, and I know that there's a lot of parents excited about August 26th coming up as well. But a lot of work going on, a lot of training. We'll hear some more about summer events tonight later in our agenda. What I wanted to do quickly, the topic of conversation in the state of North Carolina in the last few weeks has been the state budget, and I wanted to give the board just a quick, brief update on the state budget and the audience as well, just summarizing some of the things that are included in the North Carolina State Budget that was just approved and signed by the governor. For our teachers and staff, there were no salary increases for certified or non-certified personnel this year, but the legislature did approve five leave days that will expire at the end of the school year. It's the same process as last year. The budget does outline the retirement rate of 14.69%, outlines the healthcare contribution in 2013 and 2014. The budget calls for a phase-out of teacher supplements for masters and doctorate pay, and there's quite a bit of questions, a number of questions. I'm sure our attorney has heard a lot of those questions and debate about how that will be implemented. But basically, beginning next July 2014, anyone who earns a master's or doctorate would not receive a salary supplement on the state salary schedule for those degrees. Anyone who has obtained that degree and is already being paid on that degree at that point in time would be grandfathered. And anyone in a position such as a school nurse, or an audiologist, or a media specialist, or someone who requires a master's degree for their license, they would continue to be paid on that. Madam Attorney, am I correcting that?
Yes, you are, and it's interesting and hopeful, at least to some degree, to the people in the pipeline, that UNCG and perhaps others are trying to make efforts to make sure anyone who's in the pipeline can complete their degree by March so that they'll be eligible for that pay. So there'll be some sorting through of these things over time, and hopefully, the legislature will see fit to reinstate those.
I would agree, and I know there's some other universities that are trying to work with their current students in those programs to finish them up in the spring to get their license active. I think this is one of the pieces of the budget that's very disappointing, that we would not recognize people who want to take advanced courses and make themselves better prepared in the classroom. The LEA adjustment, it's been called the discretionary reduction, has been eliminated. That doesn't mean that those reductions went away. It just means the discretionary went away. So it's not the discretionary reduction, it's just the reduction. So that went away, and I have some data specific to Davie County that I'm gonna share with the board tonight later in our agenda. So that went away. To accomplish that, they changed the teacher allotment ratio. They increased that by one student in certain grade levels, and they also increased the class size maximum. In kindergarten, went from 21 to 22 as the LEA average, and the maximum in any single class to 25. Grades 1 through 3, the maximum in any class is 24. In grades 4 through 12, there is no Instructional materials and supplies, that was a non-recurring cut in last year's budget, and that amount was not reinstated. So we didn't see more of a reduction, but they did not reinstate some of the cuts that we had experienced in the past. The teacher assistant allotment is probably the biggest, most significant disappointing reduction in the state budget. It was a reduction of $110 million of recurring and $10 million of non-recurring. It's about a 21% reduction across the state, and we'll talk about that some more as to how we deal with that in Davie County. But we have a lot of teacher assistance here tonight, and I appreciate you being here. I met with a group of teacher assistants representing every school yesterday, spent some time with them, talking about how we address this issue that the legislature has dealt us, and we'll talk about those scenarios a little bit later in the meeting. Legislature reduced the allotment for limited English proficiency. The transportation budget, the driver education portion, was also reduced. We have an agenda item tonight that we would request that you increase the fee for driver's education from $45 to $55 to cover that reduction. Textbooks is the same as with instructional materials, and the allotment last year was listed as a non-recurring cut, and that amount was not restored in the state budget. There is some lottery funds that have been set aside for digital learning. Those will be support grants. We don't know how those will be administered yet. We don't see that in our initial allotment, but it appears that those will be some type of grants administered through DPI. North Carolina Virtual Public School, the funding formula has been repealed, and the legislature will calculate, not the legislature, DPI will calculate our actual cost before February 28th of each year and bill us for that. School bus replacement, there were some terms that were changed there. Advanced placement courses, there is some money in the 2014-15 budget for testing fees, and we don't know exactly how that would be administered yet. There is a dollar allotment in this year and next year's budget to increase career and technical education participation, cover some of the certification costs for some students who are in certification programs. We don't have details on that quite yet. While there were cuts, there were new programs implemented, one of which is called opportunity scholarships, or I would refer to those as vouchers. In 2014-15, when the program would begin, the legislature set aside almost $12 million, reducing that from the LEA ADM allotment to provide $4,200 scholarships for students eligible to attend non-public schools. So if a student, according to the current guidelines, was living in a household that did not exceed 133% of the free and reduced lunch threshold, they would qualify for a voucher to attend a private school. There are a number of pieces to the Excellent Public Schools Act that was originally introduced in the Senate. One of those is performance grades. We've talked about A through F performance grades. A lot of controversy in America around that right now, including a pretty big story yesterday in Florida with their education commissioner resigning over controversy over A through F. That has been delayed until August 1st, 2014. There is a provision, and we don't quite understand exactly how it works yet, that the superintendent would identify the top 25% of our teachers this next year, and they would qualify for a $500 bonus if they gave up their tenure. The contracts for teachers has been changed to 1-, 2-, and 4-year contracts with career status being eliminated in 2018. If a teacher were in that top 25%, and we don't have the criteria for that at this point in time, and they chose to take the bonus, they would go ahead and give up their tenure before 2018. So we don't have the details on how that would be decided. We don't know if that's 25% this year, and then another 25% next year, or are those the same? There's a lot of details within the bill that I don't think the legislature really thought through, but we'll have to determine how we implement that. There's a whole section on school safety in the budget bill, and as I read through those, I am really glad that the majority of those things we have already done as a school system. And just as an example, we have one of our school resource officers with us tonight. School resource officers and 20 or 30 deputies from law enforcement will be at South Davie Middle School. I'll spend an hour and a half over there this morning. They'll be there tomorrow, and the next day, they're doing training in our schools, doing simulations, and preparing themselves to protect us and our students. So we appreciate the partnership we have with law enforcement and emergency personnel in Davie County. And again, as I read through the budget bill, and I saw all the things the legislature mandates, most of those we're already doing, so I think we could be proud there. The budget bill also eliminates the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. Real disappointed, I was in the first class of Teaching Fellows, and that's been a program that's helped us to recruit and retain good teachers in North Carolina, and I hate that that has not been recognized. But in lieu of that, they are putting over $5 million in Teach for America, and I thought this was an interesting provision in the budget bill. The legislature is now going to study the GPA and class rank calculations. So that'll be quite interesting, Madam Wilson. Those are just a few of the highlights from the state budget bill. I have some more specific data related to Davie County in our specific allotments that I have uploaded to your board docs site, and we will cover in our state budget reductions agenda item a little later in the agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, or I'll answer any questions the board might have about my update.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Glad we're on top of those safety issues, and it's a concern to me to hear about all the cuts in education, but we'll get to our specific issues later. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, we're moving to the recognitions portion of the meeting, and I will call Ms. Tamela Tatum.
Members of the board, faculty, administrators, and community, I am Tamela Tatum, Program Chair for the Back to School Empowerment Initiative. First, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. And secondly, I would like to congratulate Dr. Hartness for being chosen as the District Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Hartness, you have added much value to our school system and community through your outstanding leadership, vision, and commitment to excellence in education. You are well-deserving of this honor, and we are proud of your accomplishment. This marks the third year of the Back to School Empowerment Initiative, a faith-based program whose mission is to advance and advocate the common good for all Davie County students, specifically targeting those living below the poverty guidelines, to provide a platform to communicate information that will empower, inspire, motivate, and equip students to get ready, get set, and succeed in the upcoming school year. This year, the Back to School Empowerment Initiative is excited to extend their partnership with the following businesses and organizations, to name a few: United Way, Walmart, Build a Backpack, Coca-Cola, the Davie County YMCA, and Davie County Schools. In addition, other faith-based organizations, churches, clubs, and individuals have supported our efforts as well. This collaboration has enabled us to increase our scope. Our goal this year is to serve over 1,000 school-aged children ranging from pre-K through high school with book bags filled with school supplies. We are especially thankful for the Davie United Ways donation of 1,056 book bags. The Third Annual Back to School Empowerment Day will be held on Saturday, August the 17th, 2013, at 12 noon, with the program beginning at 1:00 p.m. at the Masonic Picnic Grounds. The event will begin with a program featuring our very own superintendent, Dr. Hartness, as the speaker, as well as greetings from administrators representing the elementary, middle, and high school, and entertainment from a community choir. Following a brief program, lunch will be served, and book bags with school supplies will be dispersed. We would like to invite members of the board to attend, as well as members of the Davie County community. Students are encouraged to preregister, and they may do so at www.kofom.org, or they may register on-site the day of the event. We are still in need of supplies, volunteers, and donations. For more information, you may contact the following individuals. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and bringing us up to date and letting us know what this event's about, and we appreciate all of your hard work and everyone involved in helping care and prepare our children, care for and prepare our children for school. We really appreciate that. At this time, I'll call on Dr. Hartness.
Mr. Fuller's gonna help me with this presentation. Ms. Smink, could I ask you and your staff to stand up front with Mr. Fuller? The North Carolina State Board of Education has a recognition of achievement for Financial Fiscal Resource Management Award that is presented annually to finance officers of school districts who have shown effective cash management and use of state funds, accurate and timely financial reporting, no salary audit exceptions, or position overdrafts at the end of the fiscal year. Our finance staff, led by our CFO, Ms. Deborah Smink, and wonderful ladies that work with her and keep us all straight, Judy Conhour, Crystal Schaffner, Jamie Voschinyuk, Voschinyuk, am I getting that right? We call her Jamie W. at the office. Beth Robertson and Sheila Stanley have all been recognized as a tremendous team effort for managing our finances, and in a time when you see the things that are going on that I just described with the state budget, effective use of our fiscal resources is extremely important, and we have a team of ladies who are so qualified in a very specialized area of accounting, and we are proud of each of you. So congratulations on this award from the state. Davie County is one of 51 out of 115 school districts that met this recognition, so congratulations.
It's two certificates, one from a recognition, one from Davie County Schools, and one from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Thank you for all your hard work, and congratulations. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Wallace.
I want to make sure, remind everyone that there is an addendum to the personnel report that should be in your folder there as well. I think Ms. Bricke also got that on board docs. Just want to make sure to bring that to your attention.
And then also, you may recall that we added the YBETI monitoring contract and the YBETI transportation contract today. You have both of those on your folders. Those are late additions because the actual contracts are the same as last year. The who, what, where, when, and how is the same. It's just that our board attorney, Jill Wilson, wanted to add some more specific language to those two contracts in order to protect the students and staff and the board of education, and that's why those were not put out there for you to review until earlier today. I don't know if you have any questions about those contracts? Like I said, the dollar amounts are the same. The who, what, where, when, and how is exactly the same. It's just that there's extra language in there to protect Davie County schools.
Thank you, Ms. Smink and Mr. Wallace. So I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Drexler, and a second by Ms. Owens. Do we have any discussion? Any questions about the two items that we talked about? Okay. If you would, if all in favor, raise your hand. 6-0. Thank you. At this time, we're moving to the business items on our agenda, and I'll call on Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're now going to look at a little more detail about the budget, and I have a chart that Mary is going to bring up. Mary, if you'll bring up the first chart there, it says state spending trends. This is from a state perspective. And Board, since y'all, I'm gonna point to this one if that's okay. If you look at this chart, this is the per pupil expenditure, historical look from 2008, '09 to 2013, '14 from a state perspective. And you can see the pink bars are the state per pupil allotment. The blue bars are when the federal ara monies came into effect for those three years primarily. The green bars are federal stabilization monies. So for two years, you can see that federal stabilization and ara monies were a significant portion of per pupil spending in North Carolina. If you look at the decline this way, you will see the amount of money that we're spending per student in the state of North Carolina has declined. I know in the media, it's quite confusing when we hear folks say, "Well, there was an increase in overall spending for K-12 in North Carolina." That's a true statement, but what they're not sharing is this blue line right here, and that's the enrollment of students in North Carolina. While we've seen in Davie County a pretty flat enrollment over the past several years, you'll see in just a minute that our allotment is based on six more students than we had last year. Overall, just between last year and this year, there's projected 17,200 students more in North Carolina. So while there was an increase in overall state spending, it was not at the same rate to maintain the per pupil allocation that we've seen last year and the year before. So what we're seeing here is a decline in spending per student and increase in enrollment, so that means primarily there's fewer adults working with students in North Carolina because the majority of our expenditures are in personnel. Mary, if you could bring up our allotment comparison, initial allotment comparison. Board, you have in your board docs this allotment comparison, and as we've shared many times, there are position allotments, and there are dollar allotments. So if we'll focus at the top here for just a minute, this first section, and I know folks in the audience, you'll have a hard time seeing this, but these are position allotments at the very top. And you will see position allotments are primarily in four categories. You have classroom teacher positions, you have instructional support positions, and then you have two categories of school building administration and career and techno education that are allocated in months of employment. So when you look at the dollar allotment associated with those position allotments here, the dollar allotment you can pretty much ignore because whoever we place in those positions, if they're a 35-year veteran or a five-year teacher, the state pays their salary and their benefits. So as the average salary of people in North Carolina changes, you'll see that dollar allotment, we don't actually get that money here because we're paying those people with positions or months of employment from the state. So that will fluctuate, but if you just look at the difference in the initial allotment last year and the initial allotment this year in positions, and the dollar that they associated, that's about a $1.7 million reduction. Now, what we've done is we've seen that the discretionary reduction, we eliminated discretionary, it's just now a reduction, and you'll see that on the next slide in a minute, is accommodated down here. So the discretionary reduction last year out of that initial allotment, the state gave us all this money, almost $35 billion, and then they said you need to identify $1,562,296 in positions to turn back in, and I'll show you exactly where we took those from last year. So down here is the dollar allotments. So we get a dollar. This is like a bucket of money in each of these allotments that we can pay people. The more experienced people you have with more experience and a higher salary, the fewer people you can employ with dollar allotments. But you'll see things down here that are categorical and can only be spent for specific things. Let's walk down through some of these. If you'll look at allotment 027, 027 is the teacher assistant allotment, right there, and that was the largest reduction in this year's budget. That was a reduction of $473,288. And that allotment is based on enrollment in kindergarten through 3rd grade. So you'll hear some people say, "The legislature continues to fund teacher assistance in K-3." The allotment is still based on enrollment in K-3, but you can see very clearly, the allotment was reduced by almost $475,000 just in Davie County. So that's where that $120 million in the overall cut in the state... So that's where that $120 million in the overall cut in the state, that's how it breaks down and affects Davie County Schools. You'll go down, and you'll see allotment category 032, right here, children with special needs, and you'll see that we had an increase this year of $195,681. That's due to an increase in the number of students that are classified as having special needs in Davie County. We can't use that $195,000 increase to make up for other categories necessarily unless they're specifically associated with exceptional children. You'll go on down, and you'll see a few other adjustments. You'll see an increase in the transportation allotment of $89,000. That's for transportation costs. We can't use that for other things. So what you have to be careful of is you can't necessarily go down and, as you would in private business, and say, this is our total revenue, now we can use it how we wish. We have categories of expenditures, and you may see an increase in one and a decrease in another, but you can't necessarily move people among some of these. There are some places where you have some flexibility. For example, with the teacher and teacher assistant allotment. We can't use that for central office administration, and we wouldn't. That's a restriction. But if we wanted to use part of the teacher assistant allotment for teachers, we could do that. And there's all kinds of rules that the finance department is aware of, and that they're trained by DPI to understand of transfers that can be transferred between these categories and codes. So as we look down through here, the position allotment reduction is right at $1.7 million. It's 1.669,152. Since there is no discretionary reduction this year, if you look at the top here, let's go back up just a little bit, Mary. At the very top, the discretionary has gone away. The legislature decided how they would cut, and these are the categories that they cut in. We'll look at some more details of that in just a few minutes. So the bottom line is our total allotment between the position allotments and dollar allotments is around $373,000. In those dollar allotments, we have people employed, and those people who are employed had an increase in hospitalization and retirement contributions. The people that are paid for out of the position allotments at the top, that's already included in that allotment. Am I correct, Deborah? So on top of the 372,252, we are seeing an estimated benefit increase of right under $60,000, 59,280. Are there any questions about this chart that compares last year's initial allotment to this year's initial allotment? We just received these allotments yesterday, so over the next several weeks, our finance staff will be in the process of putting all of our employees into these different categories and determining which will be state-paid, which will be federally paid, which will be locally paid, and maximizing those resources that are there. Okay, if there are no questions, let's go to the allotment comparison reversion. On this chart, you will see, again, a more clear explanation of the position allotments. And you will see that last year, let's just walk down through this. Let's just look at the classroom teacher allotment, 001, first line. The initial allotment was 308.5 classroom teacher positions. The NCVPS is North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, so we have a reduction in our allotment for the amount of courses that our students take online. We also had a discretionary reduction of 1.5 million that I mentioned before. And the way we address that 1.5 million is we turned in 9.65 classroom teacher positions, you'll see in the green column, and 194.8 months of employment within career and technical education. That's how we addressed the 1.5 million in discretionary reduction. So you'll see the actual initial allotment after we turn those positions in, and Deborah and the other finance officers in the state had the flexibility of maximizing those, and we chose to maximize our resources by turning in months of employment for CTE. That doesn't mean that we have fewer CTE teachers. That means we paid for some of those folks out of the teacher allotment because we got a better bang for our buck from that allotment. So you'll see the actual initial allotment is in the blue column. If you move over to the 2013, '14 initial allotment, you'll see that the discretionary went away, but the reduction did not. The state legislature allotted us 286 classroom teacher positions. They changed the allotment ratio, so the reduction is there. We estimate right now, because we don't have actual enrollment and billing for NCVPS, that that'll be three positions, three teaching positions. So if you look at that one line item, we're down 15.85 classroom teacher positions. School building administration was the same. Instructional support was down one position, and the legislature chose not to reduce the career and technical education line. They chose to take it from other places. So we gained 199.8 months of employment. If you just move that decimal over one, that's right at 20 positions, 19.98 positions, if you did 10 months for each of those. So that gives you an idea of the actual allotment and how they adjusted the positions. So again, the discretionary went away, the reduction did not. Since we had already reduced those things in past budgets, these are not additional 16 teachers we need to eliminate or to reduce. They were already in our discretionary reduction last year. Okay? So if we go on down to the dollar allotments, you can match this up with what was on the previous page, with the pink column being the initial allotments, the discretionary reduction, the estimated NCVPS, and you will see the differences there. And it's very clear that the significant reduction, unfortunately, is PRC 027, the teacher assistant allotment, at $473,288. The legislature made that decision, and I've shared with staff before, this year it was 110 million reduction and 10 million nonrecurring, so 120 million altogether. If you go back and look at proposals by the House and Senate two years ago and four years ago, this has been on the table before at much larger numbers. So it's extremely unfortunate. And I will tell you that our teacher assistants make a tremendous impact on instruction in Davie County Schools. Our children in early grades have excelled because of the help that they receive from our teachers and the support they get from our teacher assistants. So while some may say this is a cut to the teacher assistant allotment, this is a cut to education because our teachers are there and doing things that teachers will have to pick up and do when they're not available, based on the cuts that we're going to talk about now. Before we talk about this specific reduction in the teacher assistant allotment, do you have any questions about the two charts that we provided? Okay, Mary, if you would, bring up the fourth document. When it came time to discuss what we would do with this allotment, I wanted to provide and get some feedback from our staff. I met with all of our principals last week, and we discussed the important role that teacher assistants play in our organization. We discussed how we might address a reduction in the teacher assistant allotment. I asked our principals to identify a teacher assistant from every one of our schools, and 11 teacher assistants took time to come in and talk with me on Monday morning, yesterday morning, about this reduction. And Mr. Wallace and Ms. Smink were in the room as well, and we walked through some of these scenarios we're going to show publicly at this point. Again, as your superintendent, I'm not recommending either of these options. But what I am saying is that we cannot continue to do business the way we've done business in the past. We have been forced by the legislature to make these reductions. So we have to take the information we have, and as we talked about with principals, our primary responsibility is the education of children. So as we look at what the options are, principals made it very clear, the more teacher assistants we can have with our children, the more adults we can have with our children, the better we feel like we can do our job. And we would like to have those people there during instructional hours. As I talked with our teacher assistants yesterday morning, the three of us were extremely impressed at how their priority is not their employment, but our children. And there were people in the room that will be affected by whatever decision we make, and they were still talking about, we're dedicated to the children of Davie County, and we want to do what's best for them. So if you look at the options that we have in front of us with almost a half a million dollar cut in the teacher assistant allotment, there are really two ways we can address this. The first option is the board could decide to enact a reduction in force. You have policy 7921 that outlines the process for a reduction in force, and if you did a clean reduction in force, that would be the elimination or the RIF of 18 teacher assistant positions that are eight hours or up to 24 six-hour positions. So option one would be to eliminate those positions, and we would have fewer employees, and those people would be without work. That's not something I would recommend, but it is an option. The second option is the board could decide to reduce the term of employment for teacher assistants to address this cut by the legislature. As I talked to my colleagues around the state, both of these options have been used in different school districts. Some school districts have chosen to RIF, others have chosen to reduce employment, others have used attrition over the years of retirements and resignations to address the reduction in funding. We have not made major reductions to the teacher assistants in Davie County through all the budget issues we've had over this past several years. When we look at option two of reducing the term of employment, I want you to have an idea of how many people this affects. We have 174 teacher assistants working from three hours to eight hours a day. Out of that 174, 112 of those assistants are employed for more than six hours a day. And if you're employed in Davie County for more, six hours or more a day, you have benefits. You have health insurance and contributions to retirement, those things. So teacher assistants are currently employed for 215 days of the year, just as our teachers are. So some folks may say, well, we only are in school 180 days. So we have 180 days of instruction, have 10 annual leave days, 10 holidays, 11 holidays in some years when Christmas falls on certain days. And then we have teacher workdays at the beginning of the school year, at the end of the school year, in the middle of the school year. Some options that other school districts have used, and this is an option we're looking at tonight, is a reduction in the term of employment, reducing all teacher assistants from 215 days to 207 days. And that would allow them to be there for a couple of days at the beginning of the year and at the end, but primarily just on instructional days when students are present. The second part of this option would be reducing teacher assistants who work more than six hours a day to just six hours a day. And that would essentially reduce the number of total hours principals are allotted at each school for teacher assistants overall. With doing those two things and not filling any of our current teacher assistant vacancies and moving some positions to other schools based on enrollment needs, reducing terms of employment according to those four things would address the state cuts without any one currently employed losing their job. And everyone who was working six hours would continue to earn their benefits. We would also consider, if we chose this option, if there were bus routes that were available, and there were teachers who were used to working seven and a half or eight hours, and they wanted to pick up a bus route to increase the number of hours they were employed, giving them that opportunity to do that as well. Again, I met with principals and teacher assistants, and while none of us want either of these options, the preference was option two that I've outlined. So at this point, Board, I would open it up for any questions or discussion that you might have. But ultimately, Mr. Chairman, according to your policy, I would ask that the board consider approving one of these options and allowing staff to implement that before school starts.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Obviously, this is a very serious issue, and I don't think anyone on this board takes this lightly. And I think, I'm proud of the fact that up until now, no one has, we haven't had to lay anyone off so far. And I think that's a wonderful accomplishment to the administration and everyone else, all the staff, for picking up the slack. And I think we all understand, and I'll be honest, I think the community understands how much more work the staff's doing. What, I'll open the floor up to discussion.
Dr. Hartness, I want to thank you for going over this, especially this allotment reduction and stuff like that, so it's a little bit easier to understand. I know I'm in the insurance business, and they want to make the policies so that they're easy to understand, and they did not make this budgeting stuff easy to understand for, I guess, for a mind like mine. But, you know, we met yesterday, Dr. Hartness, Chad, Paul, and myself in Dr. Hartness's office, and tried to figure out where we was going to go with this. And I realize, as Chad said, it is a serious, it's a serious situation, and I hate that we're sitting here today talking about cutting anybody one minute because of the fact that this will hurt people, and this will hurt people. It could hurt some folks badly. It could get some folks that's barely getting by to the point that they just give up and quit. And, you know, anytime you're dealing with somebody's life in a situation like that, it is troubling. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't sleep real good last night trying to figure out what the best thing to do is. It's obvious, I think, that option two is the best option, is to cut these folks back. But I'm concerned with a few other things, something I didn't even think about yesterday that we're going to have to deal with next year. And over the last three years, we've used $2.8 million worth of federal stimulus money to operate our school system on. And based on our fund balance policy, this is the last year that we'll be able to dip into the fund balance for operations. So we're going to be, if nothing changed, we're going to be sitting here this time next year with 800, at least $800,000 left to operate on than what we do today. And, you know, that concerns me. And, you know, and I'm going to go ahead and say it, I'm sure most of you realize my position on this new high school. I think it's a mistake to move forward with this bond. And I don't know exactly how it was. I think Paul said sometime or another that, you know, the timing is not right to move forward with a bond proposal. And I believe that more today than I did several months ago when we voted on it. Just like these teachers assistants will be hurting some of them as they lose salary, we went through a situation several years ago where we're going to cut supplements, and we got emails from teachers. I think y'all may remember that, a couple that were concerned about, you know, how they were going to make it. Well, we've got people out here in our community that are no different. Well, we've got people out here in our community that are no different. They've lost jobs, they've taken jobs with less pay, and they're struggling to get by. And, you know, this... Just the bond, if the bond passes, just the bond, the debt service on the bond for just the principal is two-point-seven-five million dollars a year. And that's a seven-cent property tax increase. And somewhere in Dr. Hartness's budget message, it said that as time goes on, as we offer quality instruction and innovative things in technology, we're going to depend more and more and more on the local taxpayer. And he says, "To support quality instruction and innovative technology in the classroom, we have to become even more dependent upon local resources." I'm concerned that we'll have no place to go. And at this point in time, I guess, I don't know, I came into this meeting, I wasn't going to support either decision. But I guess at this point in time, I would vote for Option Two, but it's a sad, sad day in this county that, you know, we could renovate... It ain't... Maybe not be the best situation, but we could renovate this high school, and we could have some flexibility in our local funding, that we maybe could replace some of this stuff. But if we do this, if we raise these taxes, and that's two-point-seven-five million doesn't have anything to do with interest. And, you know, in the first year, that's another one-point-six million dollars, about four-point-three, four-point-four million. But I'll support Option Two today just because these principals and these teacher assistants need to know what's going on. But again, I'm truly disappointed. Thanks.
No, go ahead. I was going to ask if you had any other comments about the teacher allotment reduction?
I do. I do have several. Number one, I am extremely proud of our teacher assistants because after a meeting with Dr. Hartness and how he shared their willingness to do what was necessary to teach children, that to me sent volumes. And I remember several years ago, when we were at the same crossroads before the stimulus money came about, that I had TAs call me and say, "Barbara, if I need to retire, I will, so my colleagues can have a job." You do not find people anywhere willing to do what our TAs are willing to do. And our teachers support them. It's hard for me to do Option Two, period, or One, but we have to do it. We don't like it, but we still have a voice, and I still want our voice heard, that, no, we do not like the cuts in education. Public education is the way to go, public education. If you took the top twenty school systems in this state and you looked at how well they do, look at our finance department, our transportation, the safety issue. If you look at how well they're performing and what they're doing for children in our state, we're getting more bang for our buck than anywhere. And it saddens me to see money reduced. And Steve, I understand where you've come from, where you've been from the very beginning on the high school issue, but I do hope people understand that facility monies, employment monies, are two separate pots of money. You cannot put them together, just as we went through the line items. There are line items, and they are... You have stipulations in laws that says you cannot cross those guidelines. As a principal, if I could have taken some of my facility money to hire more people, I would have, but I couldn't. I understand what you're saying, I respect what you're saying, but I also understand that right now, Option Two is our only option. And I appreciate Dr. Hartness, the finance department, everyone working together, the TAs, the principals, to come up with this solution, and I would support Option Two.
Let me say... I also want to say one other thing about the operational money and the capital expenditure money. I understand that, I understand there's two pots of money, but I understand it all comes out of one faucet, and that's the taxpayers of this county. So, you know, if you take it, you know, if you roll all your eggs and put them in one basket, then you're hurting the other side. So, you know, I do understand it's two separate allotments, but again, it's coming out the same faucet.
I'm sorry. I know Dr. Hartness took the time to meet with, I think, all of us yesterday, and I appreciate you doing that because this stuff's hard to understand, and you need somebody to really spell it out. When we met yesterday, not one time did a high school cross my mind. I didn't think about high school. I was thinking about keeping... How can we keep these teacher assistants from having to go home? And so there's somebody in the classroom with our kids. That was in my mind. So I don't like either option. I think Option Two is our best option. It does cut back hours, it cuts back days, but it also gives our teacher assistants, who are losing some of that, some of that time, which is going to obviously equate to money in their paychecks, it gives them the option if they want to pick up a bus route. It gives them the option, they're going to be having, what was it, an extra seven days, eight days, that they could go out and possibly find something in addition to do. They may not do it, they may say, "That's not going to work for me." But ultimately, I think we are, even though it's not good, we're giving them some flexibility and obviously giving them some sense of control over how they can handle this situation and how it affects their family. So I agree with Barbara, I agree with Steve. No, neither option is good, but I think Option Two, and ultimately, my choice for Option Two is because that's what the people who work in the trenches every day sat there and told you that's what they wanted, or that would be the scenario they'd go with. And that was our principals, and that was that group of teacher assistants. So that's just my two cents.
I'm basically just going to kind of reiterate what Wendy said. I appreciate Dr. Hartness and the staff working together, the TAs coming in, and everyone kind of sharing their ideas. Neither option is great. I would support Option Two. I certainly don't claim to have all the answers or any of the answers to solve our budget situation, but I am a little bit unsure as to why cutting jobs helps anything in the economy, because jobs are what we need to grow the economy in this country and in this county and in this state. So to cut them, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm so grateful to the compromise that you all were able to work out. And I'm glad that we're not going to have to do that, and I'm sorry for the other teacher's assistants across the state who are going to lose their jobs. I really don't understand that, why that is... Benefits anybody. It certainly doesn't benefit the student and the child in the classroom, and that's who we are advocates for, but it doesn't benefit our state or as well. But saying that, again, I thank you for explaining this to us and taking the time to meet with the principals and the teachers, and I will be supporting Option Two.
Steve said earlier that Dr. Hartness met with us yesterday, and we went through this scenario to try to figure out, first, to understand the two options that had come out. Dr. Hartness, when things were happening so fast that I don't have time to ask questions until I get caught up in my thinking, the problem is, the state has cut almost four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars out of a specific line item that pays salaries and benefits to teacher assistants. So all you've got to do is come up with four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars and fix the problem. You just got through congratulating Ms. Schmink and her staff on the excellent job they did, have done, and are going to do, because there's got to be a solution. Because I am a rookie and still admit that I don't know it all, is there any pot saved money, fund balance? I've heard that word ping-ponged around. Is there any... Deborah, I know that you've already done swapping of state monies and local monies, et cetera, and I trust that you know how to do that. I'm glad. I'm glad I don't have to understand it, I just know that you do. Is there any source of money that can be used to maintain the level of teacher assistance that we had last year and teaching positions that we had last year? Because it seems to me if we needed those people to do the quality work that we accomplished last year, we're probably going to need it again this year. Is there any funding source that can be picked up in? I'm not finished, but you want to answer that?
My only response, Mr. Director, would be, what would the Board want to cut that's equal to four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars? That's the only way I can see balance in this budget, is what else would there be in the budget that's worth four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand that we could reallocate? And I don't have a recommendation for you.
I appreciate your answer. Everybody on this table and everybody probably in the whole room understands that the success that we've had in graduation rates and all of the academic successes that have happened in recent years started eight, ten, twelve years ago with little ones in pre-K and kindergarten and first, second, third, where the teacher assistants affect the most. I am very disappointed to see that we have gotten into this situation to the point where it's out of this Board's control of how to fix this, other than a reduction. I think I said that right. I think I said that's what I meant to say. Couple of points that Steve made, or let me go back to Carol's comment about reduction of employed people does not help the economy at all. The thing that struck me the most after our meeting yesterday was, if someone is used to working more than six hours as a teacher assistant, and this option allows them to continue to work, but it reduces their hours back to only six, a maximum of six, that's less money that they have to pay for things with, including tax increases. And that's where some of Steve's talk, I'm sure, was headed toward the passing or the failure of the bond in the spring. Anytime an employee takes a cut in salary, which I have done recently personally to maintain my job, some is better than none to a certain point. I hate to be a part of a Board that has to go with this, but of the two options, I have to go with Option Two. And trust that the people that were gnashing teeth and pulling hair to come up with that solution have gone through every option that they could, every potential solution you could come up with. I'm disappointed in that result, but of the two, I'm obviously more in favor of Option Two. Thank you.
Thanks for all the comments. I would just... I would echo most of the comments made already. It is sad that we're in this position. It obviously affects... This affects people in a real way. It affects students, first and foremost, and then it affects teacher assistants that are employed here. And I'll say what I said earlier, that's, obviously, is a great concern to this Board. I would also echo that I wish there were other ways to fix this without it affecting people. But I appreciate all the hard work that Dr. Hartness and Ms. Schmink and Mr. Wallace and all the administration and staff have put into this. And I especially appreciate the fact that the principals and the TAs had some input in this, to Wendy's point. You know, they believe that, how not liking either option, that Option Two is a better option. And I would also listen to the folks that it's going to affect. And, you know, just to follow up on the facilities issue, you know, at the end of the day, we have a facilities issue, and whether we build new or renovate, we've seen clearly it's going to cost a lot of money to do either. And at the end of the day, that's clearly going to cost money, but that's a completely different issue. And we need to focus today on this teacher assistant issue. Do I have a motion for... To support this Option Two? From anyone?
Make the motion that we adopt Option Two.
Okay. So we have a motion from Ms. Livengood to adopt Option Two. You'll have a second. We have a second from Ms. Horn. So Ms. Wilson, do we need to state that in a formal motion? Or how...
Your motion will do that you... The motion is to accept superintendent's recommendation to proceed with Option Two and all the pertinent procedures.
Okay. All right. Having Ms. Wilson saying that, if you would, if you're in support of this motion, please show that with raise of hand. So we have six-oh in favor of the motion.
Chairman, if I might add, we will do our best to effectively communicate this. I plan to call a meeting of all teacher assistants within the next week and stand before them and offer them our support, and explain to them what options are there and answer any questions that they might have. And I would just also want to remind this Board that the decision that you just had to make is a very difficult one, and it's not one that staff created or that you created. It's not one that was created by anyone locally in Davie County. Davie County Board of Commissioners did not create this situation. This is a reflection of the priorities of the North Carolina Legislature. The legislature cut one-hundred-and-twenty million dollars out of the budget at the same time they put over two-hundred-and-fifty million... Say a million? One-hundred-and-twenty million out of the budget for teacher assistants and put over two-hundred-and-fifty million in the rainy day fund or savings account. So this is a reflection of the priorities of the state legislature, and I would encourage you as school board members for us to unite with the North Carolina School Boards Association, the Superintendents Association, the School Administrators Association, NCAE, the Teacher Assistance Association. And we need to better educate and help the legislature understand the importance of public education and the importance of the people, the roles and the jobs that they're doing with our boys and girls every day. So we have our work cut out, and we hope... Hopefully, they will come back next session and redirect. But I thank you for your support, and I thank the staffs, all the hours that they've worked, Deborah in Finance and Jeff. We will do our best to support our people, and I told our principals. Ultimately, three weeks from yesterday, on August 26th, we will have sixty-five-hundred students in class, and they don't understand the challenges that we face with this financial issue with the legislature. They're there to receive a quality education, and we're going to do our very best to continue to provide that with the resources that we have. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Next on the agenda, we have driver's education fee business item.
Thank you, Chairman Fuller, members of the Board, Dr. Hartness. You have before you a request to increase the course fee from forty-five dollars to fifty-five dollars. I've given you a little background on this. About two years ago, the General Assembly decreased the amount of funding that was allotted to school systems for the driver's education program. The... These driver's ed funds are twofold. They're used to not only teach the course in-class instruction, but then there's also the in-car instruction as well. You may, after Dr. Hartness presented this spreadsheet, after looking at it, you may sit there and say, "But we had an increase in driver's ed funding." It was a small increase of about forty-one, forty-two hundred dollars, but we've also had an increase in the number of students that are receiving the driver's education instruction. That allotment is based on the number of students that we have receiving that in that program. So that's why, even though there isn't a slight increase in funding, it's because we have an increase in... have an increase in students going through the driver's education program in the 13, 14 school year. Two years ago, the General Assembly allowed us to start to charge a $45 fee per student for in-car instruction. This year, they have adopted a budget that will allow us to increase that by another $10 to $55 per student for in-car instruction. Even with these funds, we still cannot fund that program with the allotment and the revenue that we receive, the allotment from the state and the revenue from our students, our parents paying for their students to take this course. That $55 fee will give us about $20,000, but we're still being forced to use capital outlay funds to purchase a new driver's ed vehicle each year to the tune of about $20,000. And we're still using some of our other revenue sources to help to alleviate, to put toward this budget for the costs of providing not only the in-class instruction, but also the in-car instruction. So as I said, you have before you a recommendation to approve a $10 course fee from $45 to $55 for the in-car instruction. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smink. Seeing no questions, I will ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of $10 course fee increase to total $55 for driver education in car instruction.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Owens makes the motion. You'll have a second. Mr. Dresler makes the second. All in favor? It's approved 6-0. At this time, we're moving to the public address period in our meeting, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're so excited to see you all today. You don't need to speak. I'm sorry. Okay. We're so excited to see you here today to address the Board of Education. We only have one signee, so nobody needs to be on the on-deck circle today, but if Linda Mace will come forward, pass. All right, thank you very much. Well, then we have nobody to address the board, but I'm sure in casual conversation following the meeting, you'll make your wishes known. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. At this time, moving on to committee and staff reports, and I think Dr. Hartness is up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you a number of policy revisions that have been uploaded. These are for your review. I'm not asking you to take any action on these policies tonight, but we'll ask you to consider adopting these policies at our September meeting. As you review these policies, these are standard updates to legal references and other minor additions to these existing policies by the North Carolina School Boards Association and our Policy and Legal Services subscription. So if you have any questions over the next several weeks about these policies before our next board meeting, please contact me, and we will try to answer those with our staff, and we'll ask you to consider adopting those at our September meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. At this time, I'll ask Dr. Carter to come up for curriculum summary of summer activities.
Members of staff, members of community, thank you for allowing this opportunity, or allowing me this opportunity on behalf of the Curriculum Department to tell you a little bit about what's gone on this summer. We do have a fairly inclusive list of summer activities in the board packet, so I won't belabor things by reading all of those, but just suffice it to say that we have had, in almost every school in the district, and in some cases partnered schools in the district, summer activities going on. And that spans from pre-K all the way through high school. Some of those have been focused on reading, some on math, some on science. All of them have had a component of those interpersonal skills that we find to be so necessary in the world in which we live today. We've had students working in cooperative groups. We will actually see an example in just a couple of minutes of students who are actually cross-grade grouped, so that we have older students working with younger students to accomplish some summer learning. And along the way, we have focused a lot on problem-based learning this summer across kindergarten through high school. And all of these many programs have resulted from a lot of different partnerships. We've been talking budget. We need to understand there is no budget for summer programs. So everything that we do in the summer is done through the gracious benefit, or from the gracious benefit, of various funding organizations that surround us. And we're very thankful to the Community Foundation, the Meban Foundation, Surtle, Davidson County Community College, Appalachian State University, the YMCA, and various other funding sources. I know we have a couple of statewide grants and federal grants that also play a part in what we do in the summertime here in Davie County. They say that a picture is worth a thousand words, so I would like to now give you 26,000 words' worth of a look into what happened in the summer programs here this year. And I will apologize, the fact that some of the pictures are a little blurry does not mean that the words are slurred. So you'll get to see each picture for four seconds. And that was 26 pictures. They'll start all over if I don't turn it off. In addition to that, and I've looked at quite literally hundreds of pictures and a whole bunch of video over the last few days figuring out, you know, what to throw up on the screen here. What you're about to see is a loop, and I hope we can play it three times, Eddie, of two rising first graders and a rising third grader. They are working on the concepts of force and motion, and in particular, gravity and momentum. They don't know the formulas behind what they do, but they understand the concepts and they put them into practice. And it's pretty interesting to watch them succeed. I happened to walk through this classroom while they were in their initial stages and being pretty unsuccessful. And by the end of things, this is their final product. So this is two six-year-olds and an eight-year-old.
I'm not all right saying I'm doing one, I leave it there to do the other one there. One more time.
That's split pipe insulation. That's pipe insulation cut in two. Just to roll the bar bearing, make it do a loop-de-loop, and end up in the two-liter bottle. And they started from scratch.
I'm not all right saying I'm doing one, I leave it there to do the other one there.
Every time I help it over that last tump. So that's a brief look into what's gone on in Davie County, in the schools during this summer. And I would invite you to come out and visit those schools during the summer and see what kids are doing. We believe that children gain a lot in the summer. They close some gaps, they avoid some summer learning loss, and they learn things from each other in the summer that they may not during the rest of the school year. And you can support us by coming out and visiting those programs during the summer. Don't think the school's closed just because there aren't buses in the parking lot. There probably are kids in there, so do come visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. At this time, we're moving to board comments, and I think, Paul, you're up first.
Get to do this and follow other people, and I know what to say. I've made a couple notes as I was studying for tonight's meeting and conversation yesterday. Dr. Hartness, thank you for inviting us in and going through that yesterday. Like Steve said, we didn't sleep real good last night because of it, but it would have been a lot worse today without having done that yesterday. Deborah, that was a compliment a while ago. I hope you figured that out. I mean, it may not have come out that way. The biggest issue tonight that everybody is talking about is the state reductions, and I'm very disappointed in the loss that the school system, and it's all across the state. Trusting that the staff and the administration look into every and any possible solution for a non-employee reduction if, as possible. Very concerned about the continuing to get the product at the end of the school systems process that we've had in the past if you reduce the money that it takes to pay the people to get the job done. I don't think our economy is improving as fast as some would believe or the state would not have done. They are greater thinkers than I am. I don't believe that they would have done the reductions if it wasn't necessary. I'm reminding you yesterday and today of some words like responsibility and accountability and stewardship. And Dr. Hartness has said several times, we are moving into a time when we are just way unable to continue to do businesses we have in the past. I believe that's true. I believe there needs to be a lot more thought and consideration into what's going to happen in the future rather than, I use an example one night here, that you can't just follow the car that's in front of you. You have to look ahead to two, three, or four cars down the road to see what's going on because you don't have enough time to adjust. And I would like to thank the staff and the administration in our school system who has worked with the declining funding that we've had to deal with over the years. But heads up, the bucket is near dry. The reserve that we have been using to make ends meet is finished this year, by my understanding. And I would like to hear some more discussion in the near future about what thinking you're doing in planning for years down the road when the former resources are not there. And Chairman Fuller, I would like to, this is not a motion. I don't know how to do this, so correct me if my words are not exactly the way they should be, but I would like very much to put it forward to this group that between now and next board meeting, we do some thinking and maybe get some more information from you that you might have available to us. Though they are different buckets, I think the result of moving on with a new high school is, again, former comment, very poor timing. The economic situation that we're in has caused what we've had to do tonight, and who knows what the future reductions might have to be. And I understand, and I think we all around the board understand, that the pots that we've had to pull from are drying up for the past monies, and what we're going to do in the future years, I think we need to be looking toward that some more. So Chad, I don't know what words to say to get this done, but I would definitely like to see as a discussion, I guess it's in the business part of next agenda, that we further discuss the continuing or moving or making a letter or recommendation to the commissioners to take the new school bond off the ballot in May, stopping that process, and/or coming up with a potential Plan B if it stays on the ballot and it fails. Then we'll be three years out before we get to any other solution, and the students will be in the same situation they're in right now until that time. So I don't, forgive me, I don't know what kind of words to make that do, but I would like to see that show up on the agenda for next month. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know this was tough to sit through in your chair, certainly was in this one. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment about that. We've discussed that, Mr. Dresler. We'll put some thought into adding that back to the agenda, but we've had plenty of discussion about that issue.
I will agree 100%. Slept with it for years, so it's there. And I appreciate everyone who has supported that. Thank you, Elizabeth, for being here with us tonight. I hope that you've enjoyed this board meeting. I know you've gotten to visit with others, but we do appreciate it, and come back anytime. You're more than welcome. Congratulations to the Early College for its stay of school. I drove by there today, and it was nice to see cars in the parking lot and things going on. The budget concerns are here, and I made my statement before, and I stand behind it. I do want all of us to keep our voice loud and clear and alive to support public education, and the more we say it and the more we do it, the better off we are. We are the best buy for our children in this state, not just in Davie County, but in the state. And I said before, I wish that our state would identify the top 20 school systems and see how they operate and see what they work. What I see coming down the pike is taking away the teamwork that we so carefully built over the past 15 to 20 years. The teamwork, the building together, just look at the summer programs. We haven't had a summer school, summer camp, or anything, but look how the community came together to make learning fun for children of all ages, pre-K all the way up to high school. And if you've had a chance to go into these, you really need to go visit. The excitement is there, and now they're ready to come back to school in the fall. And they've been in school all summer, but it's not school, it's real. I want to say to the Marklin family with the passing of another educator, a long-term educator, in her 90s, learned a lot from her along the way, a very, very kind lady. Also, the Finance Department and everyone involved in working with the safety issues for our county, hats off to you. You're doing a great job in the administration. I believe we, as a board, have spoken on the bond issue. I believe the county commissioners have given us the date of May 2014, and that's there, and that's it, and we will continue to go forward. We are in charge as a board of our facilities, and we need to keep that in mind also. And public education is just not one thing. It's a multitude of things that comes through the center, and the center is the child. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone also for coming out tonight or this afternoon, and I want to congratulate Deborah and her staff for a job well done. And I tell you, in my three years and two months, she's always been there to answer questions, and she does a great job, and we're lucky. We need to count our blessings. Paul mentioned something about, and I know Barb and Chad have both already said, we've, I guess we beat that horse, or I'm careful what I say, but we've discussed it. But I I too think we need to look at, at least putting a Plan B out there, because I do, I am concerned about this thing, the possibility of this thing passing. But, you know, Dr. Hartness showed one graph that talked about the stimulus money, and I want to, I want to just mention that as, and I congratulate our past board, the way they banked the local money and used the stimulus money to operate on, and, you know, and people are going to say, "Well, without that stimulus money," and really, without the stimulus money, we would have been facing these decisions several years ago. But, you know, I want to remind you, that stimulus money is also part of that $16 trillion in debt that this country's facing today, and unfortunately, our local government, well, not unfortunately, but I guess fortunately for us as taxpayers, the local government and state government are required to have a balanced budget, and unfortunately, our federal government does not. And so we were actually operating off of borrowed money for those two years, but anyway, I'm going to get off of that. I hope everyone's had a great summer. I hope Ms. Gildean is tickled to be back, to get, going back to school, as my two grandchildren are not. But anyway, I think their mother will be glad to get them back in school, but I know there's a lot of work to be done between now and the end of August, and these teachers' assistants that's going to be losing hours, losing dollars, you'll be in my prayers. Thanks.
Well, I too want to thank everybody for being here. It's good to see you all. I was surprised to see so many people here at an August meeting. No question, we have some serious issues facing us, but I think for today, I think we need to start off each day by just being thankful for all the blessings that we have, and I think we need to start the school year off in the same manner, giving thanks for the great county and the great school system that we have. I pray for a safe and productive year for our students and our staff, and a community that encourages one another in and out of the classroom to be the very best that we can be as, as a community. I'm grateful for every teacher, TA, bus driver, cafeteria worker, nurse, administrator, superintendent, assistant superintendent, administrative assistant to the superintendent, all the administrators, parent volunteers, I've tried to make a list here, coaches, counselors, to my fellow board members, and if I've left anybody out, I apologize, but I just want to thank you for what you do every day for the children in this county.
I don't really think there's much that I, I need to add. Everybody has had said, has said everything I could say, so, you know, I just encourage everybody to, I've, I make an effort myself to, you know, it's real easy, I think, to be a glass-half-empty sometime kind of person, and I, I choose to be a glass-half-full. So I think if we would all take that perspective sometime, we could, we could get a lot done around here, and people would really look up to us for it. So I hope everybody has a great last three weeks' summer before school starts, and take advantage of it, because it's going to be up before you know it. Thanks.
I would just like to, I'm not going to echo everything everybody said, but I would agree that, I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming, and, you know, we, we here in Davie County, it's obvious to me anyway, we get a, we get a great return on our investment from dollars spent on education. There's, all you have to do is, is look at test scores to, to see that, and I'm proud of our system, of all of, all of the staff and administration for your hard work, and that's, that's what it takes to, to make that happen, to, to mold our community's children into, into what they need to be. And that, along with the community helping, makes Davie County what it is, and the state in general should be proud of, of the return that Davie County is getting on, on its money. I would like to congratulate Ms. Meek and the finance staff for their recognition and all their hard work, and just wanted to remind everyone about the empowerment event. I'm trying to remember the date again. What was that date? Seven, August 17th. And I guess with nothing else, we'll move from there into our closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to discuss personnel matters protected by the state law. We have a motion by Mr. Dreschler. Have a second. Have a second by Ms. Owens. Everyone in favor? 6-0. We're now in closed session. Thank you.